Welcome, everyone. I will call the Commissioners Meeting, first meeting in March of 2022, March 2nd, to order. We're joined today by veteran Patrick Ramrow to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and our friend and colleague John Kleindit, County Engineer, to lead us in invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd join me in a moment of prayer. Lord, as we begin this time of governance, we come to you again in troubled times, but we know the darkest hour is always right before the dawn, and we have optimism for the future. We look forward to the spring and the beauty of your world. We ask that you send in peacemakers where there is war today. We ask that you provide strong leadership among this group. And we ask your guidance to all of us. As St. Francis prayed, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, your pardon. Where there is doubt, true faith. Where there is despair in life, let us bring hope. Where there is darkness, only light. And where there is sadness, ever joy. All of these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 16th, 2022 Board of Commissioners Meeting, as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will open it up. Any public comment? We'll move on to old business.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to new business.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and the Deere and Company, Cary, North Carolina, for a John Deere 1600 wide-area mower for use by the York County Parks Department for a total cost of $61,828.11 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to ratify an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Voters Registration and Elections Department and Single Point Sourcing LLC doing business as Cutco, Devilsburg, Pennsylvania, to provide ballot printing and mailhouse services for mail-in ballots for the period of February 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I know we had some discussion before about the court case, I guess, with mail-in ballots, but we are proceeding as under Act 77, right?
Yeah, right now, there's a stay.
Right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and Beam Moyer Radio Communication, Palmyra, Pennsylvania, for equipment and installation of six assessment-in-vehicle computers for a total cost of $17,038.38 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement amendment between the County of York on behalf of the Court Administration and Tyler Technologies, Plano, Texas, adding a text message feature to alert jurors when to report to duty or to adjust reporting time for a total cost of $12,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and TransUnion LLC, Chicago, Illinois, to provide pre-employment credit checks for a total cost of $20 per month and $7.25 per employment credit check.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the District Attorney's Office to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $1,995,217 to support the continued collaborative violence prevention and reduction efforts between the York County District Attorney's Office, York County Human Services Department, York County Reentry Coalition, York County Planning Commission, Community Action for Recovery and Diversion, York City Police Department, West York Borough Police Department, York City School District, Friends and Neighbors of PA, and the program It's About Change for the period of February 1st, 2022, to January 31st, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Kyle, did you want to share any comments about this?
It's almost $2 million. Pretty big grant.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I know this was widely reported probably about a month or so ago when the governor issued a press release, and we were certainly hesitant at that time to say anything. One, because we had not received actual word that it was going to be, we were going to receive up to or close to the full $2 million. And also, literally up until last week, we were working out fine details of positions and where exactly those dollars were going to be allocated. And so, if I could real quick, I'll just go down the list of what this approximately $2 million will fund. And again, I think it's just an amazing opportunity, unique in not only size but also scope. And so, it will fund one full-time prosecutor who is a special assistant United States Attorney, employed by our office, but will work with the United States Attorney's Office for the Middle District of Pennsylvania; one full-time family engagement unit, family navigator, out of the York County Human Services Department; one full-time community trauma responder with the York City School District; one full-time GVI credible messenger through Friends and Neighbors of PA; one full-time juvenile engagement officer with the York City Police Department; one full-time juvenile engagement officer with the West York Borough Police Department; one full-time reentry case manager through the program It's About Change; one full-time card project director through the York County Planning Commission; one full-time card diversion specialist through the York County Human Services Department; one full-time card trauma informed care coordinator through the York County Human Services Department, as well as some related training, travel, and supplies. And if I could real quick, I would just like to thank the following people who made this opportunity possible, and that's Michelle Bachmann with the York County District Attorney's Office, Captain Dan Akey of the York City Police Department, Mark and Robin Shear, Alice Anne Frost, Amy Evans, Sean Malk, and Chief Matt Millsaps of the West York Borough, Jessica Mockaby, Brielle Turner, Claire Dahl, and Melissa Plotkin. We're all instrumental in making this possible. So unless there are any other questions, I appreciate the time.
And when you first said, was this a competitive grant that we requested and that's what we're waiting on?
There, I believe that the governor had outlined through PCCD, and I believe it was formula-based as far as a large amount of money and what that money was going to look like for each county or jurisdiction that applied. But it certainly was no given upfront that we would be awarded any money, and I certainly think up to the $2 million. And so, while I hesitate to sit here and say it's a foregone conclusion, we are, all of our discussions up to this point lead us to believe that if approved here this morning and once signed, that we hope to see an award letter on the near future.
And it's for two years, right?
That is it, yes.
And it funds, I think you said, like, 10 positions?
Close to.
Yep. Okay, sounds good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Axon Enterprise Inc., Scottsdale, Arizona, to provide a 10-year agreement for use of Axon body-worn cameras, docking stations, and evidence.com video storage for a total cost of $717,067.39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and ESCO Inc., Effort of Pennsylvania, to provide monthly maintenance for video surveillance equipment, computers, servers, and encoders for a total cost of $15,264 for the period of January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and ESCO Inc., Effort of Pennsylvania, to provide a one-year enterprise SMA camera licenses renewal for a total cost of $18,796 for the period of March 3rd, 2022, to March 3rd, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and McClure Company, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to remove and replace two expansion tanks for the domestic hot water system for a total cost of $16,618 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of Facilities Management Department and Manida Electric LLC, Hershey, Pennsylvania, the lowest responsible bidder for the electrical construction portion of Pleasant Valley Road Phase 2 for a cost of $396,400.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I know, Mark, the next two or three motions are for renovations at the Pleasant Valley Road that we purchased. This is all on the budget for 2022?
Yes, it's all been included in the capital reserve budget for the county.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of Facilities Management Department and Keller Contracting LLC, York, Pennsylvania, the lowest responsible bidder for the general construction portion of Pleasant Valley Road Phase 2 for a cost of $1,208,889.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services, 911, and EBA Engineering of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to assist with address point and road center line verification within all 72 municipalities in York County at a cost of $302,000, funded by a Pima grant.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a change order number two with Devlin Inc., a Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, extending the contract time for County Bridge Number 258 rehabilitation project Slate Hill Road over the Yellow Breaches Creek in Fairview Township, York County, and Lower Island Township, Cumberland County by 42 days to May 23rd, 2022.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to ratify the following agreements between the County of York on behalf of the York County Treasurer and the listed municipalities and school districts to fulfill the duties of indicating the indicating tax collector for the collection of real estate taxes effective January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2023, and are as listed below in the agenda.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And Barb, maybe you want to explain? I know we do this every year, but last year, we had an election for tax collectors and what happened?
We had, yes, we had an election for tax collector. There are some districts that have vacancies, and so these districts represent ones where the municipality has contacted, or the school district, has contacted the treasurer's office and asked that we collect on their behalf.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to revise the previously approved proposal from Herbert, Rowland, and Grubig for the 2022 bridge replacement program to remove Bridge 202 Red Mill Road, Newbury Township, from the scope of work and replace it with Bridge 43, North Branch of the Muddy Creek in East Hopewell and Chancford Townships. The revised fee will decrease $18,500, changing the agreement amount from $738,200 to $719,700.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the following tax refund registers authorizing payment of York County real estate tax funds as listed below in the agenda.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements from the general fund for the week of February 23rd, 2022 totaling $3,293,011.68.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements from the general fund for the week of March 2nd, 2022 totaling $6,783,141.71.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to appoint the following persons to fulfill the duties of the indicated tax collector for the collection of real estate taxes effective January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2023, as listed below in the agenda.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And Barb, these elected appointees?
These are also districts that had a vacancy, but the municipality appointed either a neighboring tax collector or someone within the district to fulfill the duties.
And they were in for also two more years, the appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
So the law requires that any vacancy show up on the next ballot, and so we go through that process again, and then, of course, if there are vacancies, then we renew agreements.
So the next municipal election, there would be an opportunity, if somebody wanted to run, to fulfill the following two years left of the four-year tax collector term, they could. And these folks are only collecting the portion that's related to the county tax. That's what we're approving today.
And I know I had been asked once, and I think I know the answer, but maybe, do they have to live in a contiguous area, or how is it that can somebody from one area do a tax collection from another?
The law says a neighboring tax collector.
Neighboring, okay.
And they also have to already be a tax collector. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no executive sessions, no other business. We'll open it up again for public comment. Hearing none, if I could ask for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we will move on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 16th, 2022 Salary Board Meeting, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or as set forth in New York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row offices as stated below, with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, and they are listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and no Retirement Board, but we will move on to Elections Board. So I'll call the Elections Board meeting of March 2nd to order, and first up is a report from the Elections Department.
My name is Julie Hirsch. I am the new Director in Elections and Voting. I'm very happy to be here. I just want to mention, a shout out to the staff. They've been great helping me get acclimated. I'd like to start the report by letting you know where we're at with the mail-in ballots. About 60,000 were sent out, and of that, I have a breakdown. There were 18,344 mail-in, they were online, and of those, the nonpartisan were included in that figure. We can also break it down according to the Shore reporting, an additional 9,503 that were done by hand within the Elections Office. And I also want to note that the clerks, as they were doing these on hand and as they were receiving the online, they are also scanning them into the Shore system so that if we later get a request or there's a concern about how the application was processed, instead of looking through numerous boxes to try to ascertain what is going on with this application, we can just kind of click on the scanned document within the Shore system, and we have all the information there in front of us. So that will save time in the Elections Office. And one thing I've learned as a new director, things come at you fast, and a lot of times you have no control over the outcomes. So I appreciate any moment that we can utilize and work more effectively. So a shout out to the clerks.
So Julie, I just want to make sure I clarify for folks. So if you'll recall, Act 77 has a requirement that all Elections Departments have to send out a mailer for people who sign up to be on this permanent list. And so that was the 60,000-some letters that Julie was referring to. So what's come back are those people who have made the decision that they would like to vote via a mail-in ballot.
So we're about 30%, or, excuse me, 50% of what was sent out. So the work has been tremendous down there. Thank you for the clarification. Moving on from C cap, Act 77 remains in effect until we have further direction from the Supreme Court. Also, they'll continue to hear arguments on this case as of March the 8th. We have not heard anything regarding the Department of State's request of what are we doing with petitions for local and state committee? And as a matter of note, we have two petitions that we're holding for a local committee until we receive some kind of motion on what to do with them. I know there are other counties that are facing the same challenges, and they're not sure what to do. February 26th, as a matter of update, last Saturday, the textual descriptions of the changes were sent out, particularly of impacting Districts 10 and 11, Jackson Township. We, in looking at the textual descriptions, they're noted by census blocks. So that's not something that we have full access to. Brian reached out to the Planning Commission. They're looking at some of the maps, and we'll have more information so that we can get that out, exactly where is District 10 and where is District 11, which of course is really important so we can get out the vote. And then on the 25th, I just want to mention, a lot of you may already be aware of this, but the petition forms are available from the Department of State for congressional and statewide candidates. They do not work with us here at the county level. They have, and this is in a line with the Supreme Court order of February 23rd, they will have until the 15th of March to circulate their petitions. So with not having hardcore deadlines on some of these, like state and local committee, for an example, it's a challenge for us to make sure that we do everything correctly, to make sure everything's on the ballot correctly, that everyone really understands what the requirements are. So we're awaiting that, and certainly, as we get information, we will be sure to keep you updated. I want to turn over some time to Brian for any added updates that he'd like to share.
So I'm just going to add some additional dialogue on what Julie said. So unfortunately, we have a bit of a bifurcated petition process that's going to be occurring, not just in York County but across all the other counties. So as Julie said, folks that are running for one of the congressional seats or a statewide gubernatorial or lieutenant governor race can circulate petitions now. Those folks who desire to run for a position in the State House or State Senate, because those new maps have not been approved yet, any individual who wants to run for one of those types of offices is not allowed to circulate a petition at this point, and we are waiting on direction from a higher authority on when that will be resolved. So two processes going on at the same time.
I guess one question, just to follow up with Julie. A lot of people ask the question, with the interruption in the process and the court-related cases and everything, talking about the scheduling and the timing of how you can get your job done and have the primary election on the date that it has been advertised. Any direction on when the decision will be made to make sure we're going to meet those deadlines?
Basically, we're awaiting to find out what those deadlines are, and certainly, we will confer.
Right.
And we will, we want to make sure that the timing is there for us to do everything that's legally required.
Right.
And at that point in time, I can't speak to the specifics because we don't know what the hardcore deadlines are going to be yet.
I guess the court process is what's...
And at this point, the date for the primary has not been changed.
Right.
So to our knowledge, the primary will still be held, as of today, on the 17th. Well, I should say, as of today, at 10:25 a.m.
That's right.
Yeah, so I think it's noteworthy to mention, that's why we've been working ahead with the mail-in ballots as quickly as we can so that we try to have some reactive time in between other things. It's going to take a coordination of staff and effort, but we want to make sure that we know what we're doing before we try to do it. I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
Thank you. Now Brian's going to go into some ballot order information.
Good morning, Commissioners. After, as the report for the 2021 primary stated, we are making our ballot order public. So what the Election Task Force has decided to do is 60% of voter registration for York County ballot order, which comes out roughly to be 169,600. Currently, we're looking at 2.5% of voter registration for provisional ballots. That right now is going to be 6,400. With provisional ballots and Act 77 being up in the air, we might have to revisit, but if that's the case, we will always make that public as well. So I just wanted to give a public update on the ballot order. I know the Board of Elections has to sign off on it, and I believe we've done that at Election Task Force.
So just to remind folks, we had done some analysis after the primary of last year, and the Board of Elections made a decision that the request, that the amount of ballots that were to be ordered for Election Day had to be approved by the Board of Elections. And also, as part of that analysis, we established that a minimum of 50% of the ballots would be ordered based on the number of registered voters, not based on the number of people that showed up in the prior elections as the statute currently exists. So we are, we are being very conservative and ensuring that we do not run out of ballots on Election Day ever again.
Exactly.
And I do, and you might want to point out too, that in the last election, we did have locations throughout the county that were available to print ballots, so we did have a problem. So I think we've covered all our bases.
Yes, we still have the four quadrant printing locations, so we are, we're covered there just in case. Next up, our...
So would you like us to vote on that now, or do you want to finish, and we'll take a motion at the end?
Um, Michelle, do we need to do an amended, because there's, we don't actually have a motion on it. Do we need to do an amended?
Well, it was already, it was already on. The ballot order was already on there, so I think you can make a motion. The ballot order was already on the agenda, so it did give notice to the public that it was going to be addressed, so I think you're fine to move to a motion.
Okay, yes, Commissioner, if you want to move to a motion, I would appreciate that.
So could I have a motion?
Okay, well, I will move to print or have available 60% of ballots of the registered voter in every precinct for this upcoming election.
Election day ballots.
Election day ballots, right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next up, we're looking to update our fee schedule. With all of the increased costs across the board, unfortunately, we're going to have to increase our printing cost from 25 cents a page currently to 50 cents a page going forward. USBs are still going to be $20 per USB. So I would ask for a motion to approve the new fee schedule at 50 cents a page plus $20 for USB if requested.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the updated fee schedule as just requested.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Now, these, this is basically for people who are running for office and coming in and asking for voter list or whatever. If they want a hard copy, they would be paying 50 cents a page.
Correct. That's most of them, or if somebody wants to come in and look at candidate's campaign finance and request copies, that's also going to be 50 cents a page.
Or if somebody wanted a walk list.
Or a walking list or a street list. Anything, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next up, we're going to do some polling place changes. First up is going to be Spring Garden 3. Basically, it used to be at the Township Building. They went under construction, so they, we moved it over to Lutheran Memorial Evangelical Church. The Township Building is now done with construction, and we did an ADA compliance check on it. It's perfect. No, no new measures are needed. It's ADA compliant. So I'm asking the Board to approve Spring Garden 3 to go back to the Township Building.
Okay. Do you want to do these individually or all together? I know they're listed...
Yeah, we'll do them all together.
Okay. Next up is handover 2. It was, it's at the Municipal Market House. Representative Kate Clunk reached out to our office. She's been getting some complaints on Election Day that the Market House is too small. We are able to find St. Mark's Lutheran Church on Charles Street. They have a gymnasium that we can use. We went out there. It is ADA compliant with a few corrections in the parking lot, but overall, it's a perfect spot for an election, so I would ask that the Board approves that as well. Next up, at the request of the Judge of Elections, we're looking to move York Anna from the Community Fire Company to Christ United Methodist Church on Main Street. The Judge of Elections is looking for a different, different space. The firehouse isn't really meeting her needs for setup. So after looking at the church, Christ United Methodist, we think that that's going to be a good spot. So I would ask the Board to approve that move. North Cador Second District from St. Peter's United Church of Christ to St. Paul's United Church of Christ. The space is too small and the lighting's not great. Judge of Elections asked us to move that. We looked at St. Paul's. It's a perfect spot. Again, a few corrections for ADA compliance, and we'll be good to go. And finally, York City Seventh Board. In September, the Board approved a change to the Rev Stadium, People Bank Park. Unfortunately, in the primary, there is a conflict with a game, so they're not going to be able to host. After discussions with the city when we got to go move it, they, they didn't want us to move it mid-cycle. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to use the Rev Stadium. So we're asking for a permanent change to combine York City 5 and York City 7, both at the Appel Center. The Appel Center is more than happy to take on both. So I would ask the Board to approve that change as well.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the permanent relocation of the following polling places pursuant to 25 PS, 27, 26, as listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So based on the changes that are going to be permanent, the office will be getting out updated voter registration cards to the people that are registered to vote in those polling locations.
Correct, yes. We will be printing them off and getting them ready for mail Friday night. And Monday, or I would assume Monday, they're going to go out.
Okay.
Okay.
Final motion up is with the Supreme Court order, we know it affects local committee people. They only need 10 signatures, where referendums need substantially more, some places being in the thousands. They need, for the liquor referendums, you need 25% of the highest vote in the last general election. We're asking the Board to allow referendums to be petition gathering to either be on the current Supreme Court-issued calendar or the next one to be determined, not a combination of both. I would ask the Board to approve this so that referendums can, they can start collecting petition signatures.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the use of any Supreme Court-ordered election calendar for local municipal referendum petition filings. Petitioners must adhere to the timeline in the chosen election calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I guess, Michelle, just to qualify this, I mean...
So we don't believe that the Supreme Court will make a decision specifically with regard to referendum petitions, and they do need a significant number of signatures. So what we're indicating, or we were advising, is that we would not reject any petition as long as it fell into one of what we believe will be two Supreme Court election calendars.
Okay. And basically, the referendums would be for liquor licenses or something else in York County?
There's, yeah, there's a limited number of topics upon which a referendum can be brought. So there's about 10 different, 10 different categories, one of which is liquor.
Okay.
And, and that is, is coming up this, this primary in several municipalities.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
All those...
He made the motion, right? Okay, just checking. I just want to make sure the motion was out there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Finally, we just like to remind York City residents in the 5th Ward that used to vote at the YMCA, you're now voting at the Appel Center. That was approved back in September. Cards were sent out in December. To the two groups of people at the United, that voted at the United Way, 12th Ward, 3rd Precinct, you're now voting at the 4th United Methodist Church on Lehman Street. And the 12th Ward, 1st Precinct, who used to vote at the United Way are now at Alexander Good K-8 Elementary School.
And our website reflects those locations, correct?
Yes. Our website and the Planning Commission website both have been updated as well.
Okay, great. Anything else?
No, that is it.
I just want to ask if we could take an executive session real quick before we close out. Okay. Okay, that, anything else from you all?
Nope, that was it.
All right, I'll just see if there's anyone out there that wants to have a public comment.
Hello, Matt Enright, York Dispatch. Could you do me a favor and on the PowerPoint, go to this next slide? Just want to double check. Next, yes, stay here. Motion to approve the use of any Supreme Court-ordered election calendar for local municipal referendum petition filings. You mentioned that there are effectively two calendars. Do you mind just giving me...
Not two calendars, but two, well, I guess, two cycles to circulate petitions. So for those individuals who are running for either the 10th or 11th Congressional District, that includes some of York County, or for individuals that maybe want to run for Governor, Lieutenant Governor, they are able to circulate petitions starting as of last Friday through March...
15th, I believe.
15, yeah. So those can be done. Folks that are running for like a state representative in the House or the Senate, they are unable yet to circulate petitions because the redistricting map that was put forth on February 4, there is a 30-day time period at which that can be appealed. So we're kind of in that timeframe, so anyone running for those offices at the state level cannot circulate a petition at this juncture. So that's what I was referring to, is there's two times at which petitions can be circulated. So then, just to revisit on the referendum, because there is a fair amount of signatures that are required, what we approved today is the ability to either do that during the cycle that's going on right now or to wait and do that whenever the next petition cycle gets approved from the state for those state positions.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I do want to clarify, because I had somebody ask me actually last night, and I guess Michelle O'Brien, but people running for state committee from Republican, the Democratic Party, and local committee people, are they now allowed to circulate petitions?
State committee is a no right now until the, the state congressional maps. Due to, and Michelle, if you want to take over, please feel free, but due to Philadelphia and Allegheny County, the way the state committees are structured out there are different than the rest of the state. So for state committees, a no.
The redistricting will affect, could affect those positions, but it wouldn't otherwise, it should not otherwise affect other counties. But that question was not specifically brought before the Supreme Court when they made their initial decision. So the State Department did request that the Supreme Court clarified that, and that's the second order that we're waiting for.
That's the second, okay. Because I, they only need 10 signatures, and they, somebody called me last night and just asked me, I'm going to run again, and I said, I, I thought you could circulate, but I wasn't sure.
And I think right now, what, as, as, as the Elections Department had indicated, that those petitions are being held. They're not being rejected right now.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay. Any further public comment? I just want to make sure that clarified everything. All right. Any other business anyone has for the good of the order? If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.